Okay. President Powell and Director Nelson, we'll go ahead and get started. Director Bianco is still not in the room, but he should be in shortly. We do have a quorum because we do have Director Aguilar in the room. So if we'd like, we can go ahead and get started.
Great. Great. So I will, I've already asked Sylvia to read the script, but I'll officially call the meeting to order. And why don't we do the script first?
Sure.
And then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. So I would like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution Number 2021-43 in an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19, and because state and/or local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing, the public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend the meeting in person. The meeting is being streamed live on the district's website, As stated on the agenda, members of the public who wish to provide public comment may do so in person or via Zoom.
Thank you. And we'll make sure to try to get everyone's opportunity to participate by calling on them as we go along. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Okay, and roll call, please.
Sure. Good afternoon, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Sartor will be absent today. Director Bianco is not yet in the room, but we will note when he enters the room. Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have a quorum. We will not be taking any action today, given that it's a study session. And do we have anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time?
President Powell, we do not have any members of the public online at this time, other than our staff member and a consultant.
Okay. Great. All right, so then let's, why don't we go into the, our one item of discussion for today, which is a presentation on the Cost of Service Study for the Sanitation Fund. Go ahead. Whoever's in charge.
Good afternoon, President Powell. Members of the board, this is Jeffrey Keel. Eric Calocchia from NuGen is our lead consultant with NuGen. He's been leading this sanitation cost service study. And together, he and I will be going through the slide deck, including their initial analysis and recommendations. As the multi-year capital improvement program is a major component driving this study, we've included a list of projects as an attachment to the agenda item. And we also have Carrie Oliphant and Armando Rodriguez from engineering who are available to answer any questions on those items. So with that, I'll introduce Eric and turn it over to him.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, members of the board. Jeff, are you sharing the?
Yes, I'm sharing. Can you see?
I cannot. Now I can see it. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. We've been engaged with the district since about September, and we've been working on the Sanitation Fund Cost of Service Study. Tonight, we're going to discuss our initial recommendations for the Sanitation Fund's five-year financial forecast. We'll talk about the revenue requirements, the customers of the system. We'll talk about our next steps for the sewer rate structure and our cost of service analysis, and talk about some key dates.
Okay, Eric. Sorry, go ahead.
We'll be discussing an initial forecast. We're presenting on the next slide two scenarios. The baseline scenario is a 100% Pago-funded Capital Improvement Plan scenario. And the initial recommendation is a funding scenario that incorporates debt service and grants that are advantageous for the district based on the recommendation of the engineering group, based on qualifying projects for low-interest loans and grant programs. Both forecasts include operating expense escalation and impacts for the Capital Improvement Plan, growth assumptions consistent with the sanitation capacity charge study and the recently adopted sanitation capacity charge, and maintenance of all district policies regarding designated reserves. The baseline shown here is only for frame of reference, and it includes 100% Pago-funded Capital Improvement Plan. You see the proposed revenue increases and the monthly impact. The top table is our initial recommendation. Our proposed revenue increases for the sanitation fund to finance the proposed capital plan and operating expenses. I direct your attention to the middle of the slide, the monthly impact on a single-family residential customer of the recommendation. The three tests included: the cash flow test is operating revenues less operating expenses plus debt service. The debt coverage test is the board's policy to maintain 110% of debt coverage. The reserve target test maintains the various designated reserves consistent with the board's policy within the sanitation fund. The few charts shown on this slide, Slide 6, the left-hand chart shows the expenses versus the revenues in the sanitation fund. The black line shows the revenues under fiscal year 2022 rates with no increases. The yellow line shows the recommended initial forecast of revenue increases. The chart on the right demonstrates the forecasted drawdown of reserves to decrease pressure on the rate revenue increases over the five-year plan, and it is consistent with the Capital Improvement Plan financing of utilizing advantageous low-interest debt. You can see we are threading the needle through our five-year plan to reduce pressure on rates, but also to maintain designated reserves. Slide 7 shows the impact on a single-family residential customer for the five-year forecast in the green bars. The cumulative increase over those five years is about $20 per month. Stown on the right in blue are regional comparisons of a customer bill for a single-family residential customer. It should be noted that the regional comparisons are fiscal year '22 bills. It is anticipated that those would be increasing over the five-year projection.
Eric, could I ask you a question here?
Sure.
On the prior slide, or even the one before that. So the recommendation shows five consecutive rate increases. Do you anticipate more rate increases after that as a result of this financing?
Yes, included in our projections, our forecasted model goes out to fiscal year 2030, and the Capital Improvement Plan goes out to fiscal year 2030. Our initial recommendation model does include additional rate increases beyond fiscal year '27.
Okay. Which I'm guessing are going to be, so it's pretty flat, you think? If you're doing?
They're relatively consistent with what's shown on the initial forecast in the five years.
So another 33% or something? Wow, okay. Thank you.
John, I have a question, if I might. If we can go back to the prior slide, please.
This one?
Yeah, this one, thank you. So I'm assuming that any kind of an increase less than 13% beginning in fiscal year '23 does not meet any of these test requirements?
Based on the scenario that we ran, our endeavor was to flatten out the rate increase impact over the years. Keep a scenario in which the initial rate increases are lower and the out-year fiscal year '25 to '27 rate increases are higher to maintain these coverages. If you look at Slide 6 in the Sanitation Fund balance forecast, there is an opportunity, we have a nice smooth trend down here. We could develop a forecast that has a steeper decrease in the first year to take pressure off early increases. However, over the course of the five years, the cumulative rate increase needs to be at the level shown in the initial recommendation over the course of those years.
Okay, and then I have a related question, too, if you can go back again to the, Jeff, to the prior slide. So this, the initial recommendation forecast split a 50% Pago, 10% grant, and 32% debt. So is that, I mean, could it be, you know, 20% grant and, you know, 40% debt? I mean, how do we arrive at these particular percentages? Is that methodical? Is it, you know, pick a number out of the air? Or how do you get to that schedule?
It is certainly methodical. It is based on projects that qualify for state revolving loan fund grant and low-interest debt programs. So the qualifying projects are included in the debt and grant, and the remaining projects are included in the Pago.
Okay, so the 10% grant number, they would be based on some sort of historical experience?
Actually, it's better than historical.
On the actual projects included in the future capital plan that qualify.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on the?
Well, I guess to help perhaps answer Director Aguilar's question a little bit deeper, the 10% grant, 32% debt CIP is based on what we currently believe projects will qualify for. Certainly, if additional funds become available with different criteria in, you know, year three or four, we could certainly look at increasing that. But I think trying to keep it relatively conservative at this point does include it, but it doesn't overvalue it if, you know, because we're really trying to project rate increases and trying to do what we can to decrease those increases, but in a conservative way.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. The next section of the presentation describes the components of the revenue requirement. Revenue requirements being the amount of revenue that needs to be generated by rates within the sanitation fund each year. Our forecast of operating and maintenance expenses is based on the fiscal year 2022 adopted budget. Our forecast includes escalation of costs based on reasonable escalation indices and also the operating impact of the Capital Improvement Plan. So as the district spends money and updates its processes within the capital infrastructure of the system, we've adjusted, we've included operating cost impacts in our forecast. You can see the increases in the chart on the right-hand side. Capital Improvement Plan is a primary driver of the Sanitation Fund forecast. Our subconsultant, Wes DeOchs and Associates, evaluated the district's Capital Improvement Plan and the sewer system master plan. They evaluated for the timing of the project, the estimated cost, and the operating impact. The CIP has been adjusted to move projects out as far as possible. These are projects that are necessary for the system. They've been adjusted to push projects into future years as much as possible. The results, as mentioned previously, is a funding picture for the forecast of the Sanitation Fund, 58% Pago, 10% grant, 32% debt, based on qualifying projects. The primary component of the Capital Improvement Plan is consistent with the board's commitment to increase non-potable water capacity. Major investments in recycled water expansion are included out to fiscal year '23, including moving plants to 100% recycled water. These projects are necessary to meet upcoming regulatory requirements, and they're advantageous to alternative approaches, including advanced treatment. Slide 12 shows our forecasted CIP. The red line in the chart to the right is the nominal dollars of the Capital Improvement Plan. The bars and dollars referenced reflect our escalation of those costs into future years' dollars. The study CIP from fiscal year '22 to 2027 is about $302 million. The breakdown for both the study forecast period and the fiscal year '28 to 2030 period is mostly related to non-potable water expansion.
And I just want to point out this number here that we're looking at on the upper-left chart, that $253 million. That represents projects, they're not new needs. They're existing projects. But staff has already considered to balance our needs versus the concerns about rate increases, to push those out beyond the 2027 timeframe of this study. So that's why they're identified to be picked up in the following years. It has a significant impact on holding the rates down.
Slide 13 shows our forecasted debt service. The two green bars are what is approved and currently payable by the Sanitation Fund and what is in progress based on qualifying projects that have been approved and in process. The gray bars layered on top is the additional debt service included in our forecast related to the qualifying future projects that we've included as debt finance. $68 million of it is in our study period from fiscal year '24 to '27. We have an additional $100 million in fiscal year '20, '28 to '20, '20, '30 outside of the years of our study forecast. Our initial recommendation for a five-year cash flow forecast is shown on Slide 14. The net cash flow line shows the strategic drawdown of undesignated reserves. The ending fund balance shows the forecast for maintaining designated reserve policies of the board while phasing in both the financing of the Capital Improvement Plan and increasing sanitation fund revenue to meet system revenue requirements.
So again, if you look at this, this red, these red numbers, it's representing the spin-down of reserves once we get out to year '27. That's when we're anticipating to just barely be above the target. So we're taking advantage of the new reserve policy that the board approved a little over a year ago, going from a situation where if you had a two-year, if you had a deficit, you had two years to right the ship. And we said, because of the nature of our business and things don't move that quickly, we've extended it, we have five years. So this is a planned spin-down down to that level of that safety net. And it's, that gradual decline is helping spread that impact to that benefit over the full five years. Okay, Eric?
Thank you. Included in our forecast is an accounting of the customers and usage for the sanitation fund. This is consistent with the sanitation capacity charge study. The system has about 100,000 accounts, and we're increasing that based on a forecast consistent with the study. And an increased number of equivalent sewer units, which is your billing unit for the sanitation fund. And that is due to the fact that some accounts have more than one ESU. So you see the 130,000 ESUs forecasted forward. We are assuming a consistent ratio of accounts to ESUs for our future forecast.
A very modest growth rate through this period.
The next steps for our study is a discussion on the sanitation fund equivalent sewer unit rate structure, which includes a monthly account fixed charge and a monthly service charge per equivalent sewer unit ESU. Our cost of service analysis will align system costs with customer classes. The three customer classes listed there, residential, RV and trailer parks, and non-residential. The, this process is ongoing, and this will be the focus of our February study session. Some key dates to anticipate for the study. We have our initial forecast study session currently. We anticipate a February 15th meeting to discuss our final financial forecast and our discussion on rates and rate structure, anticipating a March finalization of the study and approval of mailing of Prop 218 notices and a public hearing on May 10th, which allows time to get the new rates to the tax assessor to be included on residential tax bill.
So? So that?
That's the conclusion of our presentation?
Yes, that concludes the presentation. Eric, we just had Director Bianco join us. And we'll give him a moment, take a breath. He's got his mask on and see if he has any questions he'd like to ask. Or of course, any other board members.
So even though we're cutting our reserves in half by the end of the five-year period, we're still going to meet all the debt service tests, and that doesn't create any kind of rating service concern or?
It's, as Eric mentioned, the whole thing is a delicate balance between all of our interests in keeping our strong credit worthiness, our ratings high, our flexibility strong, while, you know, being considerate to our customer base and not having spikes down the road, for example. And there's, there's a rather substantial set of projects coming down the road that are, many of them are already in progress and a lot of work that's needing to get done.
I understand, thanks.
I always want to make sure that all of the participating directors have an opportunity. Is Director Bianco in the room?
Yes, sir.
Can't tell. Oh, he's actually there, okay. So we don't have to worry about him. Director Nelson, just want to make sure you have an opportunity if you wanted to speak up.
Thanks, John. Yeah, I think, you know, it's a little bit of a sticker shock to look at above 10% increases over a five-year period. That's, that's quite a bit. And even, I don't know, I, when we compare to other districts, it's really frustrating because we kind of, we just kind of fall, we're usually at the lowest, and we're projecting ourselves to come up into the highest, counting on some of those other districts to raise their rates to stay competitive. And I don't know if they have to stay competitive that way. I guess, what I would like, I mean, we're, this is pretty aggressive, $253 million over this five-year period. It seems to me like, what can we do to stretch that out a little bit more to soften the blow of this 10% plus over five years? That's probably more of an engineering question more than anything. And it looks like you have, I think, Jeff, you said 28 million is approved, 40 million is in progress, so 68, that leaves about 180 million of potential flexibility to soften the, maybe the speed at which we're moving on this. So maybe we could have a little more discussion in that realm.
Yes, and I also just wanted to clarify the figure, the 253 figure. I'm looking at Slide 12. That's the portion that was excluded from the time span of the study. That's the portion of the CIP projects that were deferred into the outer years.
Oh, okay, I see now. So we're actually looking at 302, right?
That is correct. So in total, it's a, it's a 200, a $555 million need over just under a decade. And the determination through a fair amount of scrubbing got us down to including 302 in the, in the current study's range of years and putting the other 253 out. And I think to answer your other interest, for the next study session, which is scheduled for February 15th, we could provide additional information on the loans and grants in progress, if that would be of help and assistance to the board.
Could you go back to the, to the chart that has the percentage rate increases over this period? I just, I just wonder, right? So we got 13, 13, 13, 12, and 11.
And as Director, President Powell had asked about beyond that, the consultants have a couple more years, beginning in '28, where those similar increases are still going to be required.
And what's the percentage, then, of the non-potable water expansion that is driving the capital projects? What's the percentage of the non-potable water expansion?
Slide 12. There you go.
There you go.
Fifty-six.
So that's 56%, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the collection system? What's that like? Just the transmission of the sewage to get to the treatment plant?
Yes.
So that, Jim, that'd be 16% of CO2?
Well, it's also trunk sewers, so you get big lines and little lines. I don't know what percent of that is anticipating new growth and development, but we have seen an uptick in development. So I think it would be naive to think that there's not going to be an increase in demand on the system, which as lots get developed, you know, we've got to make sure we've got the connections out to those. We're also looking at connections out in the East Valley for affordable housing, which is a big priority for, for both us and the county. Some of that can be funded by grants, because it can't be used for, we can't use ratepayer funds for some of that. So I take that back, it's probably not included in these numbers here. Because again, what we're trying to look at is generate the revenue from the ratepayers to take care of the existing system, not necessarily expand it to new users.
So the residential users, then, this is a question that has been burning in my head, but the residential users, then, are they paying for the non-potable golf course conversions?
Are the residential users paying for the non-potable golf course connections? No, sir. Oh, I guess I'm getting a yes in the back.
Okay, can I carry?
Yeah. So again, you know, it's a cost avoidance for the treatment plant improvements that we are anticipating the Regional Water Quality Control Board will pass down to us. So we've struggled in the past to try and figure out how to So we've struggled in the past to try and figure out how to pay for non-potable connections. I mean, we built the Mid Valley Pipeline, then we couldn't get the golf courses to connect because they weren't interested. It was more of an economic competitive issue for them. So we started bringing the connections to the board so that they could approve each one as opposed to having it be a gift to public funds. So I think, you know, as, again, as we move forward, and I think you've heard Steve Bigley talk about what's going on at the regional board, and we know Palm Springs is basically being told now that they've got plant treatment improvements that need to be made, and we're anticipating those will roll down through to our Warp 10, Warp 7, Warp 4. And so what we're trying to do is, is get ahead of that by doing what we can at the plants to make sure that the effluent we have is available to be used as non-potable. But yes, there is some ratepayer funds that will be, will be subsidizing the cost of the non-potable. We originally had a non-potable fund, and then we shifted some of those costs to the West Rack, thinking it was a source substitution. And now because of the need or the cost avoidance piece, we're looking at sanitation to be the source for a lot of those costs. Again, to try and avoid putting the effluent to use so that we don't have to treat it to a higher standard to percolate it.
So the answer is yes, then?
Yes, sorry.
But it also avoids us having to purchase more water in the future by using, by reusing our recycled water. So, so I do agree in the approach that we're taking in this. Yeah, I mean, it's been a long time coming to this, this approach that we think is fair and equitable.
Okay. You know, I'll just weigh in, I think that it's a bold plan, right? I mean, there's a lot in here. They threw, kind of threw, it looks like they threw everything in there. I imagine there's a list somewhere of things that didn't make the cut. But, you know, probably a good idea to plan for all these things, whether we actually execute on all of it, you know, for either practical reasons or because we can't afford it is another question. Looking at slide seven, you know, you look at all these other entities that are charging various rates. I imagine some of them will have some increases. I just wonder how many of them are planning to go 100% recycled water, or at least, you know, we're looking at 100% on Warp 7 and 10, and a little bit on Warp 4. That's a pretty bold plan, I think, and really expensive plan, but, you know, probably in many ways necessary based on state regulation, and also very much aligned with our water management goals. I don't know, it's, it's, I guess, I'll just leave it at that. It's a very bold, very expensive plan. And, you know, I kind of wonder about all these other entities like Palm Springs or Valley Sand, you know, how much are they recycling? Is Valley Sand recycling anything? I don't, I'm not aware of it.
I'm not aware either.
So if they, if they have the same issues we do in terms of disposing their, of their effluent, where are they going to go with it? And that, that'll, that's a pretty costly proposition for them as well.
Go ahead, Steve.
John, this is Steve Bigley. Valley Sanitary District is in a different situation because they are currently disposing to the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel, unlike our Warp 7 and Warp 10 facilities, which are doing land disposal. The regional board is no longer allowing land disposal for new facilities without advanced treatment. A good example of that is the recent permit issued to the Mission Springs Water District's regional facility in the West Valley. So we are pressed to move in this direction for sure at our Warp 7 and 10. You mentioned the discharges on the slide seven. Eastern Municipal Water District's a great example. They hit this similar hurdle a few years back, and their board had an initiative that they achieve 100% recycled water, which they have done. And that was to avoid the cost prohibitive nature of going to advanced treatment for their facilities.
And John, if I could, the second attachment to the item in SIRE and on the website does have a list of CIP projects broken out over the, to the 2030 timeframe. So I'm sure there are projects beyond that, but I think that 10-year look is probably the best we can do right now, again, recognizing that there will be changes in regulation, which will then drive newer projects to be added to the list. But it does at least show you the breakdown of what's being considered as part of this cost of service analysis, and then what was kicked out beyond the 2027, or 2027 and beyond.
Yeah, okay.
Is that in the package, Jim?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the last PDF. So, so I guess we're not, we don't have a list of projects that are not included, we just, we just push them out to later years.
Well, I'm sure we could come up with a list, I just don't know how accurate or inclusive it would be, you know, once you get out beyond 2030, because, you know...
I know, I, well, that's, I get it, but it's, I guess my point is, it's an ambitious plan that includes, I mean, it appears to include everything, you know? I mean, sometimes you can't do everything. I mean, maybe we plan for everything and, and then adjust as we need to as we go forward.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I know. But it's a big plan.
So with this plan and the cost of service study, getting back to kind of that in-game of it and what the schedule is, at the end of it, is there a, is there a Prop 218 action that we'd be asked to approve?
Yes, sir.
Yes, if you look at the very last slide of the PowerPoint, we have the schedule there, we'd be looking to come back to you in March for receiving the report and approving the mailing of Prop 218 notices. And for the public's benefit, you know, that's a signal the board is willing to approve rate increases after the 45-day noticing period. It just, it just comfortably gives enough time to go through that whole process and, and then implement all the things that need to be done to get the rates put on the tax roll.
Right, they'll be on the tax roll for the residential, and then the commercial, industrial, institutional, we kind of round those all up together as commercial. They will be charged on a, on a monthly basis.
So that second meeting in March is when we would be having that, that meeting.
So I mean, I... Could we go back? Can I, can I just ask Steve Bigley another question? Maybe I'm not understanding it very well. So we're, we're not allowed to do land disposal. Valley Sand doesn't have to do the recycling because of where they're located, or what? Why can't we just put our effluent into the channel, but they can? I, I'm trying to understand the difference.
So, you know, we could put the discharge into the channel, but we're not just looking at Warp 7 and 10, we're also looking at Warp 4 because there's a different set of regulations governing the discharges to surface waters. In fact, the State Board is currently adopting new requirements for impaired waters like the Salton Sea and the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel. So it's just a matter of time, and I think, you know, the projects that we have in the CIP for Warp 4 are proactive, and if anything, those might be ones that could be delayed if we are even able to implement a non-potable water project, because there are those that don't want us to remove any discharges that are going to the Salton Sea. But if we are fortunate enough to get that approval and move forward with a non-potable project, it could avoid additional advanced treatments once the regional board sets their total maximum daily loads for nutrients and toxicity and metals that are, that those water bodies are impacted by. So I think it's, it's more speculative for the regulatory driver at Warp 4 and Valley Sanitary District would be in that same boat. But it's not speculative for Warp 7 and Warp 10. We are already, we have a draft permit that sets new discharge limits for Warp 7, that's probably going to be adopted next month, and we've already been told Warp 10 is next in line. So advanced treatment is in our future if we continue to do land disposal at those two facilities.
So is that because of where they're located, they're farther upstream, or what's the difference?
Are we discharged to land, and those discharges percolate down into the groundwater basin? So advanced treatment would be particularly for nutrients and salinity at this point. We don't know what the future might hold for other constituents, but, you know, this has a benefit for the groundwater in two ways, both quantity and quality. And I think that helps our future domestic water cost programs. So I think putting, this is a waste management issue. The best way we can manage our waste is with recycled water programs, the environmental programs, yeah.
Yeah, I, I get it, I get it. I'm on board with that, I'm just trying to understand the difference between us and the folks farther downstream.
Yeah, and the, and the big difference is the water quality objectives for the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel currently do not require a reduction in salinity to those discharges, and salinity is a big driver in advanced treatment costs. Why? Because the Salton Sea is high in salts. So currently, that's really the big difference. The water quality objectives for groundwater are low salt versus higher salts for the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Okay. Did we have any other comments or questions from other directors?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to say for February meeting...
Make sure your mic is on, please.
For our February meeting, you know, maybe an option, because I'm hearing this from others, maybe an option of a eight- or 10-year spread out. So maybe, maybe, you know, this, this may, may be more realistic in what we can, can actually get done in five years. Instead of throwing this huge price tag out to the public, we get a little bit more realistic. I know everybody wants to put everything in here in five years, but, you know, the other directors and I think, and I myself, you know, even only been here five years, I've seen it where it's, it's, it's hard to get these things done, and, and we throw a huge price tag out there to the public and it, and it, it goes, you know, we're telling them this is what we're going to do, but in actuality, we don't.
Well, that's part of why we did go ahead and, based upon our past experience, both on executing projects, but the board's interest on how we approach these things, we went ahead and did some of the front-end work on seeing how much, many of these project costs could be pushed out. Now, you're saying beyond, you know, eight or 10 years, we were pushing out a quarter of a billion dollars of projects beyond the five-year window of the study that goes through fiscal year '27.
No, I, I'm saying the, the five years that you have in front of us, pushing those out, you know, farther, which, which spreads this out even more.
Wait, we can put a scenario together.
Yeah. I mean, just options for the board, you know? We want to get something passed, right?
Right.
Okay.
All right, so I'm not hearing any further discussion, and this is our only item of study, so thank you, Eric and Jeff. Everybody, I think that concludes our business for today, and we're adjourned.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.